All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:02 PM. And this is a public hearing. Today is Monday, May 11th, 2020. And as I said before, it's just after 5:00 PM. And what I'd like to do is turn this over to Superintendent Kirkegaard. Can you give us a little bit of history and background on this public hearing and its purpose? So, Mr. Kirkegaard.
Thank you, President. Just wanted to make sure and let everyone know this meeting was properly posted. It was 24 hours in advance, and it was actually on Friday. And in that posting, we gave two different opportunities. We said that people could reply online to either the President or the superintendent, and we would publish those notice, as well as they could meet in person and visit with us, as we are doing right now. And so, per state law, school boards need to hold a public hearing. It's statutory 118.38 for the consideration of the DPI instructional hour waiver. On March 21st, Governor Evers Emergency Order Number 10 closed schools at that time until April 24th, and eventually until June 30th. And so, as a result of that, every school in the state of Wisconsin is going to need to, is required to submit a waiver for the statute regarding instructional hours. And this is just a public hearing. No action will take place at this hearing. The board has it on the agenda for a little bit later on this evening. And at that point in time, Jennifer Gennerman will talk a little bit more in depth about the power waiver. We actually had extra days built into our schedule. I believe six or seven. And we used a week of, we didn't miss any snow days this year. We used the first week to try to get ready for distance learning. And then, starting Week 2, we went into a distant learning, distance learning mode. And so, at this point in time, it really is about getting input from the public as to the proposed waiver for instructional hours, which is 118.38.
Great, thank you for that background. And so, as posted in the notice of public hearing, anyone wishing to address the board had two options. The first was to email myself or Superintendent Kirkegaard before 12 noon today, Monday, May 11th. I can report that I received no emails. Mr. Kirkegaard, did you receive any emails?
I received no emails.
Okay, great. In the, in the notice of public hearing, it also mentioned option 2, which is to come to the Education Service Center, fill out a public comment card, and I can say I am at the Education Service Center, and there is no one here, and I received no comment cards. But I will turn it over to anyone who is participating on this, on this call, other, other board members or other attendees. Are there any comments anyone wishes to make with regard to this public hearing? I'll say again, any comments with regard to this public hearing? All right. I believe then we have reached the end of the public hearing. Unless there are objections, we will adjourn the public hearing. It is about 5:06 PM. We have our regular board meeting at 5:30, and so, we will call it meeting to order at that time. Any final comments?
Mr. President, before we adjourn the public hearing, do we need to take record of some sort of who was in attendance for this public hearing? Fill out, I don't know, some sort of a record with an address stating that we did have some members of the public in attendance, or maybe that doesn't matter?
That is a good question.
We didn't vote on, you know what? We didn't vote on anything, and so, maybe it doesn't matter because there was no vote taken.
We should make an account of the number of people present, and probably should indicate if they are residents of the district.
Great. Well, maybe what I can do for the benefit of the record is I will take a look at the, at the technology here. So, besides myself, I see Mr. Andrew Sarno, Mr. Don Kirkegaard, Ms. Erin Dove, Ms. Jennifer Gennerman, Ms. Jennifer Roush, Mr. Joel Angert, Ms. Laura Jackson, Mrs. Nancy Justman, Mr. Patrick O'Connor, Mr. Paul Fisher, Mr. Timothy Harder, and Ms. Toni Schmidt. Is there anyone else that I have missed? All right. And I think we have the benefit of the attendees for the record, and I'm hoping perhaps Jennifer Roush might be able to take those and for the purpose of the permanent record, update names of individuals who were, who were residents. I think that's a good, that's a, that's a good add to the record. Any other suggestions or thoughts?
So, Jennifer, I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, board members, Jennifer Roush, Tim Harder, Don Kirkegaard would be the residents of the district. I don't know, I think the rest would be employees, but not necessarily residents of the West Bend School District.
Great. All right. Any other items then as part of the, as part of this public hearing? All right, we will consider this public hearing adjourned, and we as a board will reconvene at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public meeting of the school board of West Bend Joint School District Number 1. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to Daily News, The Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'd ask Superintendent Kirkegaard to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was, sir.
Great, thank you very much. And behind me, you should be able to see in your camera, the United States flag, and so I would ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. And just for the, for the good of the order, what I'd like to do is a roll call, please, for the school board members who are in attendance. And so, if you could unmute your microphone, I'll take a roll call. And let's start with Nancy Justman.
Here.
Paul Fisher.
Here.
Kurt Redholtz.
Yes.
Toni Schmidt.
Here.
Joel Angert.
Here.
Erin Dove.
Here.
All right, and Chris Zweigert is here. Great, so we have all of our members in attendance. So, the next item on our, our agenda would be the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, this is Joel.
Joel, thank you, second.
Second by Paul Fisher.
Paul, thank you for the second. Any final discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, Toni, appreciate that. Mr. Angert?
Yes.
Mrs. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, thank you. We have an approved agenda. All right. So, the next item on the agenda is the recognition of staff award recipients for ROTH Education and ROTH Education Foundation Awards and Support Staff Awards. And board members, I think in your packet, there is some information that with your permission, I would be happy to read. So, I will go ahead and do that. So, with regard to the ROTH Education Foundation Awards. Each year, the ROTH Education Foundation recognizes educators in the West Bend School District for demonstrating educational excellence and meeting the needs of children in our community. Candidates for the award are nominated by their peers, and the award recipients are selected by the previous year's winners. This year, the ROTH Education Foundation recognized four outstanding educators in our district. So, congratulations to the following individuals. Melissa Fox, school counselor at Decora Elementary School. Scott Mendel, social studies teacher at East High School. Erin Spath, 6th grade English and Language Arts teacher at Silverbrook Intermediate School. And Denise Gatner, 1st grade teacher at Jackson Elementary School. And the tough part about having a remote meeting is that I think normally we would have a round of applause at this point. And so, I am going to ask us to pause, and let's give a round of applause and congratulations to these folks. Thanks, everyone. Congratulations to these four exceptional individuals. Thank you to each of them for their devoted service to our students and our community. And also, thanks very much to the ROTH Education Foundation for their ongoing commitment to supporting the success of the students, the staff, and the schools of West Bend. So, thank you again. All right, on to our Support Staff Awards. So, every May, the Support Staff Employee of the Year Awards are also presented in our district. Support Staff Employees are often our unsung heroes, representing almost half of the district workforce. Support Staff Employees include aides, clerical staff, maintenance staff, custodians, school nutrition staff, IT staff, and numerous other employees who are critical to the success of our district's program. Like the ROTH Awards, the Support Staff Award recipients are nominated by their peers, and then selected by the previous year's winners. Congratulations to this year's winners, including the following. Amanda Shaw, Special Education Aid at Jackson Elementary. Farah Brier, Administrative Assistant for the Athletics Office. Leah White, School Nutrition Manager at the high schools. Suzanne Schwab, School Nutrition Administrative Assistant at the high schools. Peter Kern, Kitchen Coordinator at McLean Elementary. Mike Westfall, Custodian at McLean Elementary. And Lisa Miller, Council Payable at the district office. Again, let's pause for a round of applause recognizing these winners. Congratulations to all of our award winners this year. This year has obviously created unprecedented challenges for all the staff in the district. The school board thanks these employees and all of our staff for the work they've done to ensure our students continue to learn and to grow, even in these most unusual times. And so, those are the board's prepared remarks. I'll just say thank you very much to these award recipients, and also, again, to everyone in the district for pulling together during this unprecedented event. And we are grateful for the services that you provide to our children, to the district, each and every day. Any other comments from our school board members?
Well, Chris, I'll just jump in real quick.
Of course.
As many of you might have seen on social media and whatnot, we didn't want to pass by this week without getting that opportunity to recognize our, all of our staff during Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as our award winners. So, thank you to Nancy Kunkler and principals who accompanied me as we did a lot of surprise social distance house visits to hand out these awards over the last week. It was, it was a lot of fun, doing it a little bit differently. Nobody answered the door in their pajamas, which we were really glad about. We didn't want anyone to end up in that situation. So, we had a, we had a good time, really appreciated that opportunity to still recognize everyone, and got a lot of gratitude from those employees who, as you said, are working extra hard and in ways they never thought they would to make sure that our program keeps going during this. And I want to thank everyone for doing that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right. So, the next item on our agenda is another recognition, and this is for debate and forensics. And I believe we have Patrick O'Connor, who's going to be doing the presentation. Hello.
Hello, thanks, Chris. I am West High School Assistant Principal Patrick O'Connor, and I'm speaking on behalf of East High School Forensic and Debate Advisor Dora Sexton, and West High School Forensics Advisor Danny Schumacher. I'd like to recognize these advisors and their assistance on the successful seasons they had for debate, also the coaches, assistant coaches John Netzger, and for forensics, Ashley Sexton and Lays Arons. Also, we'd like to recognize the following students for qualifying for the following national tournaments. First, the Catholic Forensic League National Tournament, which has unfortunately been canceled. The following students qualified though, and were planning to compete in the national tournament. They include Lincoln Douglas Debater Caitlin Marsh, East Senior. Public Forum Debaters Chanel Kreiser, West Senior, and Raymond Spores, West Sophomore. Ananya Sehni, West Senior, and Abby Wicklash, West Junior. Congressional Debate Sam Campbell, East Senior, and Ex-Temp Speaker Jack Steele, West Sophomore. Original Oratory Noel Mensch, East Junior. Duo Interpretation Haley Porter, East Junior, and Sunshine Probst, East Junior. Asti Gassemi Vigar, East Soph freshman, and Shayla Laikano, East Soph more. Also, for the National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament, which has now been adjusted to an online format, the following students have qualified and are planning to compete and represent our high schools. Lincoln Douglas Debate Emily Canalis, East Junior. Brianna Banovich, West Junior Alternate. Congressional Debate Abby Wicklash, West Junior. Raymond Spores, West Soph more. Sam Campbell, East Senior isn't for that. Duo Interpretation Haley Porter, East Junior, and Sunshine Probst, East Junior. Asti Gassemi Vigar, East Freshman, and Shayla Laikano, East Soph more Alternates. Humorous Interpretation Emma Samer, East Junior. Santi Cardenas Delgado, West Senior Alternate. Dramatic Interpretation Natalie White, East Junior Alternate. Original Oratory Noel Mensch, East Junior. And finally, the National Speech and Debate Association Senior Only Tournament will also be held online, and Senior Caitlin Marsh plans to participate in the Lincoln Douglas Debate. Congrats to all those students for qualifying. Good luck to those still able to compete and represent our high school. And thanks again to Mrs. Sexton, Mrs. Schumacher, Mr. Netzger, Ms. Sexton, and Mr. Arons. And I'd like to follow Mr. Zweigert's cue and ask for a round of applause for these students and their advisors on their success, and good luck going forward.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. And congratulations to all these folks who qualified. It's quite an accomplishment, and so, glad you could spend time with us so that we could recognize and thank you.
Chris, before we go on to the next, Patrick is leaving us. He took a new job, and is going to be the High School Principal at Campbell's Park. And so, we wish him lots of luck. And I'm not so sure, but I think maybe we even have a distinguished alumni on this call with him. But Patrick, we will miss you at West Bend. You've been here for several years, many years, and we appreciate all you've done, and wish you lots of luck in your new position at Campbell's Park.
Thank you, Don.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, we're on to the next item on our agenda, a presentation for, for the Brenda Gilleski Memorial Fund. And we're honored here to have Steve Gilleski in our presence. And so, he's with us here in the Education Service Center. And so, we'll just turn it over to, turn it over to you here. We'll get some technology set, and we should be good to go. There we are.
A fine introduction, so just hand it over to Steve.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Gilleski. 15 years ago, my old wife Brenda and I moved to West Bend. We picked a home that would be central to Decora, Badger, and High School because we had three small children. Brenda stayed home with our children until our youngest Lauren was in grade school because Brenda was passionate about parents spending time with her young children. Unfortunately, Brenda passed away unexpectedly on February 12th, 2020 due to a brain aneurysm. Brenda was an employee of the West Bend School District for 12 years, was as passionate about other children as her own. Brenda quickly became aware of kids coming to school that did not have the same blessings as ours did. Like the schoolies in our district, she was determined to make a difference, as her heart broke for the children and families. Brenda worked as a Special Education Aid for most of her years at Decora. Brenda did not only love the children she cared for directly, but for every child at school. You couldn't go to a public event in West Bend or to a store without Brenda being attacked by small children, and Brenda loved every single second of it. As you have seen, Brenda's smile and her actions lit up our town, and the lives of those who knew her. Brenda was coached early on by our friend Dana Lysowski to help start a program known as Eagles Nest, a program to support students with their academics, to reduce barriers to their education. Program evolved into the PBIS rep around support that the liaisons provide to students and their families. Brenda started going to Eagles Nest at Arbor's Trace in the summer to work with kids. She knew that kids needed to be working on reading and math. Our own kids served right alongside her. Later, Eagles Nest became much, much more. Brenda and Dana showed movies, even invited kids to our home, and family to play games, run through the sprinkler, and eat ice cream. Serving less fortunate families was the driver, and the education part came much easier because of the personal connection that was being built. I am blessed to serve on the Kennalbrook Church Board of Elders here in West Bend. In September of 2019, we had our monthly dinner at our house. We learned about how the Helping Hands and Backpack Friday programs had been started by the liaison team. We learned that it was a very significant program to many students, and we were told that there was zero budget to start the 2019 and 2020 school year. With an unknown source of funding to start the year, we knew that our church needed to partner with the awesome team that Sharon Kalas and Carrie Hughes had assembled. We were able to donate about $5,000 to get the ball rolling for the pantry items that were in need. In January, the elders invited Jamie Thomas and Crystal Monday to share with us the impact they have been able to make in students' lives with donations made to support, to support the pantries. During our dinner, we learned so much more about the students' needs that the families have, and how donations and community resources are being used to reduce barriers for the students' education. Examples ranged from food, supplies, college application fees, taxi services, mentoring, toiletry, and love being poured out. The stories of amazing assistance to our families broke our hearts. The team of amazing liaisons that are loving on our children are nothing short of heroes. I planned, I had the pleasure to meet with all of them. What I learned, they're not doing this for fame or fortune, but they do so because they're passionate about our children and our community. Most of them knew Brenda well, and loved her ability to calm a screaming child, and the way that Brenda could not only impact them, but the classroom, staff, and principal that she worked with. The first day at home after Brenda's death, I remember sitting in my living room honoring what Brenda would want me to do with the more, the memorials that would likely pour in. My first thoughts were that I would donate them, donate them to Parkinson's research. I was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease in June of 2019, and in fact, just two weeks prior, Brenda and I were introduced to Sharon Kalas by our mutual friend Carrie Hughes. Sharon helped Brenda and I process through the ins and outs of my new condition. Sharon also agreed to help me find a new doctor and help me connect with other Parkinson's patients. But the more I thought about it, the memorial, I remembered that one important thing that Brenda and I tried to live by, ties and offerings, offerings, donations should never really benefit the giver. As I prayed about the decision, I reminded about it, I was reminded about Helping Hands and Backpack Friday in our school liaisons. I immediately became very excited to get every cent that would be donated in Brenda's name over to the kids in our district that Brenda so passionately served and loved. This was a very simple decision, because the amazing team was already built and ready to serve. The oversight would be top-notch, no money wasted, and well-stored it. And Brenda played a big role in starting, and I knew she would make this, that this would make her smile. The only thing that I needed help was, was how to make sure that the money went to where Brenda would have wanted it to go. So, I called up Matt for Troy Lather, and after pausing for a moment, he said I knew who to call. Just by random coincidence, that person was also Sharon Kalas, who just two weeks prior, Brenda and I met with for two hours, where we seemed, seemingly were talking about Parkinson's. This is a story of how the Brenda Gilleski Memorial Fund was started. She helped raise $13,815 to start. However, this is not the important part. The important part now is to celebrate over and over every time that the liaisons make an impact in our students' and families' lives with their love. These heroes are Jamie Thomas, Crystal Monday, Cassidy Nolan, Dana Lysowski, Sheila Podwell, Christine Snagnets, Christine Husband, and Marcia Temez. Liaison, Brenda will be with you in spirit as you work. Every time that you run into a challenge, if you think of, what would Brenda do, I know that you'll find the right answer. School board, I sincerely thank you for allowing me to share this story. My plea for you is to listen, and I mean really listen as often as possible to understand the role of Sharon, Carrie, and liaisons as often as possible. They are truly making a difference, not only in our quality of education, but in our families' and lives of the West Bend School District. Also, a resource and plan to continue to feed this amazing funded program is so important for, so that it is around for years to come. My children and my entire family have benefited greatly from the West Bend School District, and for that, we sincerely say thank you for your dedication to our community. Thanks.
We are very, we are very honored to have you here, and thank you for tribute, generous gift. It's tough now with COVID-19, and you know, the small help we have here physically pales in comparison to all people who are watching this, can be at our board, can others. Brenda, age will vary, but every day for the district, every day, and with the gift for work and continue every day. And you and your family are creating thoughts, but you also have a pledge to honor your request, and that is, we will continue to honor and acknowledge the great work that's done by liaisons. On behalf of the district, you have our last gratitude. You're very thankful for this year, and I feel a lot of sympathy. Appreciate honoring Brenda, a ring of the round of applause. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right. It's time for public participation. Just allow me to pull up my script here. All right. We come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time. Copies of the policy are available in the back of this room. I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and participate, obtain and complete a participant common card near the entry and turn over to the president prior to the meeting or when the law by the president. Participants may contact concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. I will pause there, as I have not received any common cards, and so, I will just pause to make sure there's no one here who wishes to address the board, and I do not see any. So, we will conclude public participation at this time. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And so, the consent agenda, consent agenda consists of the minutes of the April 27th, 2020 regular board meeting, disbursements posted to May 11, 2020, resignations, ratification of contract. Any comments with regard to the, with regard to the consent agenda? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. This is Joel.
Joel, thank you.
Second, this is Nancy.
Nancy, second, thank you. Any final discussion? If not, a roll call. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Angert?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Zweigert is a yes. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Red, uh, Mr. Redholt, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. At 7:00, the consent agenda is hereby approved. Thank you, everyone. On to the next item, which is revenues and expenses in the aggregate, July through March of 2020, the quarterly report. And Mr. Sarno will present first.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Kirkegaard. It's always a pleasure to get in front of you. This, this information, where it's monitored weekly, monthly, on a regular basis, presented to you on a monthly basis through the consent agenda. I do appreciate these quarterly reports showing all of the activity by fund. Included in this evening, there's a four-page document that's been loaded into Board Docs. I will present that right now. Bear with me for just one second. I will refer to kind of portions of the page and whatnot. There we go. Can you guys see my screen right now?
I can.
Okay, thank you. So, this is the quarter three, revenues and expenditures in the aggregate, showing budget to activity, not just for the current year, as well as per- The main point behind that is that we've done some good work with our grant claims, our money management, and whatnot, and really what the importance of that is through the ability, even though interest rates have declined within the last month or two, we had been performing quite well with that revenue, source of revenue. So just a nice sign of health for our district, I'd like to point out. Doesn't mean that we're going to end the year any different, it's just that we're a little bit more ahead in comparison to where we were last year. What I've done in this document, so each bracketed or fenced in areas of fund within our accounting, within our chart of accounts, as I've been sharing here for a little over a year. And then what I've done is, any points of interest, I've highlighted as yellow, such as this 106% decrease, and then made a comment down below in the notes section. So our general fund, Fund 10, right off the bat, everything is tracking exactly where we would anticipate it to be. There are no concerns, and I do share that through quite a few of the funds, but one of the outliers that we have here is, a year ago, and you can see with this $1.25 million, there's one and a quarter, or excuse me, $750,000 of Jackson Land that was purchased last year. And so that is going to show large variance in compared to the $418,000 we've spent within equipment, and that's just not equipment, it's actually considered assets. So there is a variance there, but again, everything is tracking as we would anticipate. And if at any point you have questions, please feel free to interrupt. Our Fund 21, which is our gift fund, two points of interest, we did receive our final payment for the Silver Lining Arts Center through the West Bend Art Center. So that has been finalized, so the gift revenue is complete for that. And then as well, we do have new GASP 84 standards that talks about how we're required this year to account for both revenues as well as expenditures, which is why there is a variance from last year, even a variance from this year's budget to activity. No concerns, just a different way that we're accounting for that. I will recapture updated budgets at the June, one of the two June board meetings. Fund 27, which is our special education, we did have an increase in equipment due to the purchase of a van for special ed student use. Every other area within our Fund 27 is tracking accordingly, both on the revenues as well as expenditure side. Fund 29 Head Start, again, all revenues and expenditures are tracking. It's a large grant that we have, Fund 29 Head Start, where the county seat for this program. Everything is as it should be. Fund 38, which is our non-referendum debt, and those are all the payments that are made for our outstanding debt that was not taken to constituents to vote on. So everything that the board acted on, everything is tracking accordingly as it would be. There are some, as you can see, the 113%, very similar to, excuse me, it receded differently than it was last year. However, the reason that it's actually showing more revenue than we budgeted is that there's some discounts that get applied during our audit, because several of those are the governmental issues that have tax incentives. That's an adjustment made after the fact. So you would have seen something similar last year had we receded the money at that point in time. Our Fund 39 referendum debt, so again, monies that we've gone out to issue debt through our taxpayer approval, everything is tracking accordingly, just like it should. We did not, at this point in time, receipt those monies last year. We've been on top of that this year, just recording those appropriately. Everything is tracking exactly as you'd anticipated. Fund 41, which is our capital expenditures, similar to last year, we had not expensed all of our monies at this point in time. We still do have a remaining balance that can be used as we finish through June. Any unexpensed monies at that point in time do get transferred into fund balance, but our revenues and expenditures, as we would anticipate at this point in time, are tracking the way we would hope they would be. But there is a small amount of money yet to be expensed before June 30th, if at all possible. Fund 46, which is our capital improvement trust, these are where we have money set aside. We've not done this the last couple of years. So the fund balance that's sitting there is earning interest, originally budgeted $20,000. It had been outperforming. Interest rates have fallen the last couple of months, so I would anticipate that as we wrap up the last couple of months of the year, that would increase fairly slowly, but it is outperforming the amount last year due to a higher interest rate at the beginning of our current fiscal year. So that's a positive. Fund 49, which is our other capital projects funds, this is where we deposited the monies from the Barton sale a year ago. That's where you can see the $541,000 of revenue. At this point in time, we've not recorded any revenues or expenditures. That money is available immediately. If we so chose to spend it on a facilities-related project, it could at some point be designated and do a different fund if the board so chose, but no activity planned for the current year. Fund 50, which is our nutritional services, so all the breakfasts, lunches, and snacks and whatnot for all of our programs, it continues to perform. Just today, I was given notice by Abby Padilla, our Nutritional Services Director. This is the first week where they're deploying meals on Monday. We're just over 1,050 meals, excuse me, not 1,050 meals, 1,050 students were addressed. Each one has provided five breakfasts and five lunches. So literally today, we deployed 10,500 meals. So very humbling in the sense that our community needs this, and we're being successful with being able to get our children or our communities nutrition that they need. But specific to the program with revenues and expenditures, we are continuing to pay our staff per board action, but the revenues that they're bringing in are covering a fair amount of the expenditures. They may see a slight dip at year-end. I'm updating those budgetary numbers right now. May see a budgetary dip in their fund balance at year-end. So we'll continue to monitor that. Fund 73, which is our other post, excuse me, other post-employment benefit trust, this is where our retiree activity is booked. We've not made the transfer yet for our district contribution of a little over $1.25 million. We are now recording monies different, not just with the interest, which is performing fairly well, but also with member contributions. So these are existing retirees that are contributing towards their post-employment benefits. So everything is tracking as we would anticipate it to be, and we've made some changes to enhance the accounting of this activity and fund as well. The last fund I'll talk about tonight is Fund 80, which is our Community Services Fund. We have actually, and I'll highlight this area, we actually have recorded a little bit more in revenues through local sources. We still remain at $260,000 of taxpayer dollars. However, we have utilized Badgers Middle School Programming with our co-curriculars, so the difference of $15,000 is actually some monies that were put in through there, which is proper accounting. But we are tracking well. We actually did anticipate a deficit this year of approximately $60,000. So we are doing well in comparison to where we thought we would. So a little bit more activity this year due to the school resource officers, tracking middle school co-curriculars a little bit differently. But again, revenues and expenditures are tracking as anticipated. I have no concerns in this fund. But if any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to share the information.
Any questions?
Andy, this is Kurt. I just have a general question, without getting to specifics, but noting, kind of a two-part question, noting that we're saving some money by the latest events. I know this activity only runs through March 31st, but April and May we're in right now. The question is, like, for busing, we might be saving, and some 50% of the coaches' pay that we didn't pay out, and other miscellaneous savings due to at least remote learning. So there's savings on the one side, and then there's maybe additional expense for remote learning and technology that we've had to invest in. Do you have any, the question is, do you have any idea of a general budget effect for monies not used? And the second part of it, would they just go into the general fund as a savings for the next year?
Yeah, great, great question. There's two pieces of information that I'm trying to gather at this point in time, so I've been focusing a lot of energy and effort towards that. The first thing is, where do we plan on landing this year between revenues and expenditures with some type of surplus? So indeed, there are some expenditures we're not anticipating. We are, what I'd call, short of staffing expenses, as well as operational needs, and impacting students through their needs. We're essentially in a spending freeze. So I'm updating budgets at this point in time, trying to understand where we will end up the year to get a good idea. I believe that there's meetings later on in the week where Act 185, Understanding Wisconsin's Stimulus Package, and how that's going to impact schools across the state with a potential revenue source, a probable revenue source. I'm trying to understand, or I'd love to know, what's going to happen with the next fiscal year. It's year two of a biennial budget. We were planning on a $300 per student increase. We're working on three different scenarios, because where we were set with a budget for next year, I've been told to, by several organizations, plan on that increase, plan on a $0 increase, or a flat dollar amount, and plan on a reasonable decrease in your revenues. Again, because the state will not have money to offset with, due to their decreased anticipated revenues as well. If the state doesn't allow for an increase, that would then get passed to the taxpayers, which we need to be sensitive to as well. So we're trying to understand where we are in the current year, and start making an estimate, and come up with a plan for next year, and how to balance the budget. So that will be coming very soon here, within the next couple of weeks. It could get interesting, which is why we're trying to come up with a plan and just understand what that means for our school district. Every school district right now in Wisconsin, across the nation, is trying to understand what this could mean.
Great. Other questions for Mr. Sarno?
Andy, as it relates to food service, school nutrition, handing out the meals that we've been doing on Mondays, does that end on June 6th, or whatever our last-day school is?
Yeah, thank you for asking that, and actually working with Nancy Kunkler right now and messaging, because we've been giving out that information on a weekly basis. Right now, it's anticipated that the last district day, and we've been, any student, any child, excuse me, from six months to 18 years old, is eligible for a bag of food and a milk right now. In the past, what's happened is during the summer, it's considered a summer feeding program put on through the city. We do a lot of the work for them, and they deploy the meals. It's historically only been available for free families, but we believe that that's going to be, that what we're doing right now is going to be extended through the course of the summer. So the city will actually be taking over on June 8th will be the first week that they will be beginning their program. They'll have their involvement in continuing a fairly similar setup to what we're doing right now. But we will stay in touch with the community, we'll make sure we stay on social media and keep everybody informed as to the plan. But it's our belief that that's going to continue through the summer months.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking for that, Joel.
Other questions? Andy, appreciate the report. Your exhibits and explanations are always great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
I will, Chris, if we move on, I'll make a motion to approve, hang on a second, the 2019-2020 fiscal year quarter three revenues and expenses in the aggregate as presented.
I'll second. That's Aaron.
Great. Thank you for that. We have a motion in second to approve the report as presented. Any final discussion? If not, I will call roll. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Repel?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
And Mr. Swiger is a yes. Mr. Ongard, did I call you?
No, I'm a yes, though.
Thank you. All right. There's an empty box on my checklist here. That's 7:00. Thank you, everyone. All right. Next item on our agenda then is review of the school board meeting calendar. And Mr. Kirkergard, I don't know if you have specific comments, otherwise, I was just going to mention that this is included in your materials, it outlines school board meeting dates for the 2021 school year, starting in July of 2020. The only things I would point out is, we would have one meeting in July, we'd have one school board meeting September 14th, and then the other meeting in September would be our annual meeting at the high school auditorium, and one meeting in December. Other than that, we would have two meetings going on. So, Mr. Kirkergard, did I miss anything there?
Joel, the order of the comment that I would make is that this year, committee of the whole concept, we found out later on that you have to literally have a special board meeting if you want any kind of at all on that, and so this is designed to have two board meetings, rather than one board and one committee of the whole. Once Superintendent Wimmer is on board, it seems that first one is the actual meeting choice and check would be committee of the whole concept, if that's what you continue to go forward with, and then as needed, but that would prevent you from having to have a special meeting to action at the second one.
This is Nancy. I was just asked, I mean, you kind of brought it up, Don, but has this schedule been shown to our superintendent? Would she, you know, did this work for her schedule, or has anyone reached out to her about this?
Yes, we did. We sent it out to her at the same time we sent it to the cabinet. Originally, we had a couple other deets, but we made it change a little bit. For example, August, it's August 17th, originally, we had it as the 24th. Well, that's the first day of in-service in our school, and that doesn't work very well, excuse me, of in-service, that doesn't work. And so we did do some tweaking around it a little bit, but we did send that calendar out to Superintendent Wimmer and ask for her input, and she was okay with it at this point in time.
Before we move on to approve, I assume we'll approve this, before it gets posted, let's just make sure we change, starting on January 11th, the year from 2020 to 2021. I don't personally want to repeat 2020, so.
Joel, that's a great catch.
You beat me to it, Joel.
Yep, there we go.
All right. Any other comments?
I move to approve the 2020-2021 school board meeting calendar as edited. This is Paul.
Second, this is Tony.
Tony, thanks for the second. We have a motion in second to approve the 2020-2021 school board meeting calendar as edited. Any final discussion? I will call roll. Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ongard?
Yes.
Ms. Repel?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Oh, yes, sorry.
We got you, thanks. And Mr. Swiger is a yes. That's 7:00. Thank you, everyone. We've got a calendar for next year. All right. So really, I think the next three items on the agenda are somewhat related, but we're going to start with suspension, potential suspension of Board Policy 185 board committees for the upcoming year. And Mr. Kirkergard, did you want to kick this off, or should I?
You know, Chris, I think you can. We talked about it before, and I think you and we're both on the same page. Why don't you?
All right. I'll give it a stab. So as the board knows, we have a current board policy. It's Policy 185, which establishes six standing committees. And this past year, we elected to use a different approach, and that is, we preserve the policy committee, but then also, but then all the other items really were taken up, if not at a regular board meeting, in a committee of the whole structure. And so we had suspended the board policy for the duration of the year because of that structure. So now the question comes up, well, what would we like to do this next year? And my recommendation first, we start with the policy committee, is that we need a policy committee by statute. So as the, as the board knows, we have a current board policy. It's Policy 185, which establishes six standing committees. And this past year, we elected to use a different approach, and that is we preserve the policy committee, but then also all, but then all the other items really were taken up, if not at a regular board meeting, in a committee of the whole structure. And so we had suspended the board policy for the duration of the year because of that structure. So now the question comes up, well, what would we like to do this next year? And my recommendation first, we start with the policy committee, is that we need a policy committee by statute, and so that, that committee really needs to move forward. There was interest in a curriculum committee, and so wanted to run that, of course, by the, by the board as well. And then the other question, I guess, would be, well, what other committees might we, might we want? And so what I might recommend is this, that we suspend Board Policy 185 for this, for this upcoming year, but we adopt a structure where we keep a policy committee and we establish a curriculum committee. And what we could do then is after our new superintendent joins, we could sit down with her and talk about what would a good committee structure look like, because we can certainly change it at that time. But in the meantime, we can, we can continue on with the, with the policy committee and with the curriculum committee. I might also suggest the curriculum committee that we start after July 1st, after our new superintendent is on, is on board. So I guess what I'll do is pause there first of all for board discussion with regard to that idea or any other suggestions. Once we have that squared away, I think then we can decide what to do with the board policy and then decide if we're going to build these other committees. So I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate others' thoughts.
Well, this is Nancy. I'll start. I agree with you on what you've suggested. I do think the curriculum committee is an important committee that needs to be brought back. I guess one of the thoughts I think that we had, and someone, Toni or Joel, someone who's been on the board a little longer, please help me out if I misspeak here, but I think one of my concerns is that, you know, there's a lot of work that goes in at the committee level, and I feel like we as board members need to trust that work. I mean, we can certainly question it, but what I don't want to do is have a committee meeting where we go through, you know, an hour's worth of information, and then we expect our staff person to turn around and go through that same information at the full board meeting. I mean, there's a reason for committees, and that's to, you know, kind of decipher the information and bring forward recommendations. So I just, I want to say that if we're going to go back to that, I, I don't want to sit through hours of the same information regurgitated. I want our board to feel that they can trust the work of the committee that was done. So if everyone is not in favor of that and, and everyone wants the information, then perhaps that's not the route to go. I personally like the committee aspect. It allows different board members to get involved on different levels. And if there's a hot topic on a committee meeting, anyone can attend. It's, you know, you don't just have to be the member who's on that committee. So I guess that's my point in all this. I just, I don't like the idea that we would regurgitate the same information over and over again and kind of at nauseam. I would like this board to get to the point where we trust the committee work. So that's my point there.
Nancy, I think your point is exactly why they eliminated some of the committees, because I know technology, for example, they would do the technology committee, and then they would do the exact same thing with the whole board, or maybe the same with some others. And that changed a couple of years ago. That was before I was here, but I believe your comments are exactly what was happening, and that's why they avoided the committees, because it was just, we did this presentation twice.
So I guess I'd like to hear from other board members. I mean, are we at the point where we feel that we can trust the work of the committees? And it's, trust is the wrong word, but where we're satisfied with, with that amount of detail, and then the committee chair brings forward the information, and then we have conversation at the board meeting? Or do all board members want to be apprised of all committee workings? Because then it's a waste of time to, to, you know, have other committees, I guess, is my point.
Well, Nancy, this is Paul. I guess answering your question with a question, if we go down the, the future route of a facilities committee, given the issues that are facing the district in its entirety on that topic, how would any of us feel if we were not on the facilities committee? Is that a big enough need right now that we need all hands on deck?
Well, I mean, I think you'd still have all hands on deck when you had a vote on something. You know, the committee in my mind is the one who does the digging and presents you with the ideas. And then the board, you know, the committee then says, you know, lack of better words, we had three options, and we felt option A was the best option because of, you know, these four reasons. And then it's up to the board members then to ask those questions, you know? Were there more questions that need to be asked? Are there more thoughts that need to be pondered? Or do you believe, you know, do you believe the work of the committee to be, you know, you agree with that? So I mean, I think it's, I think it's open for conversation. I just don't want us to go backwards to, like I said, boring everyone to death. So I, I think we need to just figure that out as a group.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I think to your point that even if you're not officially a standing member of, in this example, a facilities committee, you're still welcome to join those meetings as, as certain tasks are being tackled. So we have that option open to us.
In the past, there was an issue of some committee meetings being held simultaneously. So if we choose to go back to a committee, the format where we have multiple committees, I would like us to not have the overlap like we did previously, so we can have the opportunity to, to attend committees that we are not members of.
I agree with that as well.
Other thoughts? You take, take them in order. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I like the idea of starting with a curriculum committee and getting that committee going again, the potential to add others if needed. One of the, I think our board members have really spoken really, really well to the benefits as well as why we went away from that structure. The one other piece that I'd like to, not that needs consideration now, but we just need to be mindful in the scheduling, as Ms. Schmidt had said, not only with the date and the time. We had, our board meetings at that point had started at 6:30, and so sometimes we had two committee meetings prior to the board meeting beginning. And I would just say that we could consider having them on an, the committee meetings being on a night that the board was not in session would alleviate some of those other concerns.
I'm curious what the, what the board's feelings are with regard to moving forward, you know, even after, and hopefully it is soon, our COVID-19 issue is behind us. You know, do we find that the use of these electronic meetings is effective? Because if that's the case, that may give us some additional flexibility to have these on different, on different nights and, you know, reduce the obligation for commute or whatever, you know, whatever it may be. You know, my thought is if we are able to effectively continue the use of these electronic meetings, that might help kind of relieve the burden a bit. And if they're recorded, others could catch up on the, on the meetings afterwards. So not sure if there are any other thoughts on that.
That, I, I agree with that. That's an excellent point, Chris, especially the meetings where there is a presentation and the presenter can roll us through the, the screen. That, that helps a lot.
Great. Thank you.
If you were to look at all the different committees, then the one thing that you might want to consider is facilities itself. If the facilities committee is going to work on whether we need, you know, the million dollars worth of budget expenses that we're talking about, and whether we put new block top on this year, or whether we do a roof A or B or some of those other projects, then I think that certainly would make sense that a committee structure could do that. To go back to Paul's comment, if the facilities committee is really helping to design the facilities, if it's looking at whether we build two new buildings or one new building, then I'm not sure you can do that in a committee without rehashing the whole thing with the board. That's just my own personal background on that one. The facility is certainly can be a committee just like any other committee, but referendum facilities might be a little bit different than, than non-referendum facility committee. That's just Don's thought.
So facilities is more maintenance issues than, and strategic is the entire board yet? Sorry, Toni.
Yeah, I, I think we can go to maybe a hybrid of what we used to have and what we had this past, or currently. And like Don said, certain things like that aspect of facilities could warrant its own committee, but we don't need to go back to a full, I think we had six different committees previously. That was, that was a bit much, but curriculum, facilities, that, that makes sense to me. And then a committee of the whole for everything else.
Great.
I guess, sorry, Chris, just one more. I'm sorry to, you know.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Throw my input in here, but one of the other committees that I thought we never utilized very well, and I do think it's a very important committee, and this came out, you know, pretty strongly when, when we were talking about our future and our future success, is kind of a public relations or a community relations committee or something. I believe it used to be called something like engagement, and it included sports and other things. And, you know, I, I think that committee could probably stand an overhaul and maybe a different name or something, but I really don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, we talked a lot about strategic communication and public relations and really kind of marketing our district, quite honestly, to, to current people, to current students, but also to potential new students and new families. So I wouldn't want to lose sight of that. I think our new super probably has some ideas on that as well. Actually, Laura just reminded me, it was the stakeholder engagement committee. I kind of think that name's a little hokey, honestly. So, you know, would like to come up with something different that really maybe speaks to what I'm trying to get to as more of a public relations or something, but I don't want to lose sight of that committee, and I do think it's an important one.
Great.
I know we're not seconding things, but I totally agree with Nancy. We all agree we need to do a better job of community communication and getting the community more involved. And just to be real quick, if, if I were to choose the top four committees, totally agree with curriculum and policy. The, the third one Nancy's talking about is, is key. Facilities would be the fourth. And finance, human resources, and technology, here are my thoughts. We have excellent leadership in all three of those areas that present materials to the board, like Andy just presented, finance, so that we can all hear. So to have, they're just being done well right now. So those are just my top four.
Great. I appreciate that. Well, here's what I might suggest. It sounds like, again, policy committee, something that we need, curriculum, I know we've talked about that and have interest in that. We talked about several other committees. What I might suggest is that we consider, again, suspending Board Policy 185 in the meantime. But then what we do is we will tonight talk about a policy committee and curriculum, including members. Then for the other committees, what I, what I'd suggest is we wait for our next superintendent to come. We sit down, and I'm, I'm happy to take this on, talk about, here's what the board was thinking with regard to committee structure. What does our new superintendent think with regard to committee structure? Maybe there are some additional suggestions there, and then come back at that time, which would be in July, with a proposal to this board for kind of a more permanent committee structure. Would, would you be amenable to that?
This is Nancy. I would be.
Okay. Thank you.
I would be as well. I like that idea.
All right. Okay. The thing we can do is take these kind of one at a time, if that's all right. So let's start with first agenda item, which is Board Policy 185. I would move to suspend Board Policy 185 board committees for the 2020, 2021 school year, while the board utilizes an operation structure that includes the policy and curriculum committee.
Second by Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second. Any final discussion on that item? If not, I will call roll. Mr. Anger.
No.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Rebel.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Swiger is a yes. I registered six yes and one no. The motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Um, Chris, I don't know if this is a point of order, and maybe I can't do this, so feel free to rabble-rule me, but I'd be interested to hear if Mr. Anger had a different suggestion or if he just didn't like this suggestion since he voted no. Can I ask that question or is that not allowed?
Sure. Mr. Anger, are you, are you willing to share?
Yeah, and my apologies for not speaking up before the vote. I, I just, I personally like the way we've done it the past year or two now with, with having a policy committee. I don't think, I, I think that all of the other five committees, we get regular updates from our regular board meetings, and, you know, committees are not a place where decisions are made, quite frankly. I mean, we, we don't vote during committee meetings, and I don't think, you know, I don't, I don't want to have committees just to try to micromanage our administrators. And so, you know, the board is, we set policy, so obviously I think the policy committee is, needs to be in place, but I'm just not in favor of any other committees besides policy.
Appreciate that. And when we have an opportunity with our new superintendent to talk about committee structure, I think we should take that viewpoint into consideration, Joel. I appreciate you sharing that. All right. Let's see. So then the next item would be, if I grab a, all right, piece of paper, the appointment of board members to the policy committee. And I will make a recommendation that the following individuals serve on the policy committee, Joel Anger, Paul Fisher, and myself, with Joel chairing the policy committee. But I will pause there. Are there any other individuals who wish to be considered for the policy committee?
Chris, I'll chime in. I've been on the policy committee for a while now. I do enjoy it. However, if there's somebody else that, that wants to do it, feel free to chime up and boot me off, but if not, I'm happy to do it.
All right. Any other suggestions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the appointment of Joel Anger, Paul Fisher, and Chris Swiger to the board policy committee.
Second. This is Nancy.
Motion and second. Any final discussion? If not, I will call roll. Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Rebels.
Yes.
Mr. Anger.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Miami, yes as well. That's seven zero. Thanks, everyone. All right. And then the next item is the curriculum committee. And my suggestion would be that we appoint the following individuals, Erin Dove, Nancy Justman, and Toni Schmidt, with Erin Dove chairing. But again, are there any other individuals who wish to be considered for the curriculum committee? Hearing none, I would move to approve the appointment of Erin Dove, Nancy Justman, and Toni Schmidt to the board curriculum committee.
This is Paul. Second.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Any final discussion?
I'll just mention, I, I'll be voting no on this for the reasons I mentioned before. No offense to the three nominees, my fellow board members, it's just that I don't agree with the committee itself.
Great. No, appreciate that, Joel. Thank you. All right. I will call the roll. Mr. Rebel.
Yes.
Mr. Anger.
I, I, sorry. Can I, can I add a discussion point?
Sure.
In my, in my mind, that I appreciate Joel's comments. In my mind, the committee is, is less about micromanaging an administrator, but more to bring, have an opportunity to have a more public conduit between board members and, and an administrator from the standpoint of, because we represent the people who voted for us, some concerns about aspects of the curriculum need to be voiced to administration. So it just seems like a, a more organized way to, to do that, as well as when we see opportunities for community participation, we can help to organize that and make that efficient. So I, organize that and make that efficient. So, um, I, I see it as a way to help the administration, not, not micromanage it. I hope, I hope that makes sense.
Thanks, Toni. Any other comments? Any other questions? All right. I'll call a roll, and we'll start again with Kurt. Kurt?
Yes.
Mr. Anger?
No.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
And Ms. Swiger is a yes. Uh, that's six, six, uh, yeses, one no. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. All right. Uh, we'll move on to our next item then, which is Sharon Kales and a presentation on occupational therapy, physical therapy, RFP results. I hope I got that right.
It's a quiz. Yes. Per Board Policy, every three years, we need to review our provider for occupational and physical therapy, and we do that through the RFP process. So we posted the requirements for the process, and we received three, three returns from different agencies. One of them is Dominique Therapy Associates, who has been our long-term provider, and that is the agency I am bringing forth as my recommendation for continued services to our students. The therapists that are provided in the district have been here for many, many years and have built great relationships with family and our children. That involves occupational therapy and physical therapy. We serve about 100 students who are all identified as children with disabilities, and the IEP teams determine how often they will receive the services and what that will look like. Given the financial part about the, the RFP, Dominique and Associates, while they were not the lowest rated or proposed fee from all agencies, the one area of physical therapy was higher than the others. But again, the services have been thorough. They receive glowing feedback from families. They build relationship with students and really are an integral part of our district. So I'm bringing forth Dominique Therapy Associates as my recommendation for our continued provider for those services. Are there any questions?
Do you want to run the term of the contract? Is how long the contract?
It's a three-year, three-year term.
Other question?
I'll move to approve the contract with Dominique Therapy Associates for the 2020, 2021 through 2022, 2023 school year.
Mr. Joel, the second?
I'll second. Kurt?
Kurt, you need a second. All right. Motion and second. I will call a roll. Uh, Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Right. Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
Mr. Anger?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Uh, Dove?
Yes.
And Swiger is a yes. That's seven. Terrell, thank you, everyone, for the votes. Contract approved. Sharon, thanks for your help with that.
Sure.
All right. Next item is graduation for 2020 senior class. Mr. Kirk, you got it?
Okay. And I believe both John and Ralph are online, so if you have specific questions of either one of the high schools, please feel free to ask. With the 2019 and closing of school, um, graduation was scheduled for June 7th. In contact with Department of Education as well as the Health Department, both local and statewide, and to have a face-to-face graduation on June 7th is not an option. The State Department of Health is suggesting that, um, to have that face-to-face graduation this summer without major adjustments might be a significant challenge. We're not ready to give up on that yet. We're hoping that there might be some things we can do in either July or August. Might not be the same exact graduation that we have right now, but some type of a more traditional graduation ceremony, um, could take place in either July or August. I'm coming to you with two different recommendations, either a virtual graduation on June 7th, which would be our typical graduation date, or postponing graduation until July or August. And my actual recommendation is graduation on July 12th with an alternate backup day in August 2nd. And hopefully, we can have something in place that would allow students an opportunity to have a more traditional graduation. We truly believe the majority of our parents and seniors want something other than a virtual graduation. We are going to do some virtual things, but it will not be the overall graduation ceremony. One other comment that I would make before I ask John and/or Paul to make some other com, or excuse me, John and/or Ralph to make some other comments, and that is, we will sign transcripts as soon as we have grades available. And so that if your son or daughter, or someone else's son or daughter, wants to go to the Navy, the Army, to college summer school, they can do that without any delay. The diploma itself is seldom used. It's really the transcript that is important to get into a higher education institution, or the Army, the Navy, or wherever else it might go. And so, um, do not believe a June 7th graduation face-to-face is an option, but believe that we could do something in July and/or August. And, uh, John and/or Ralph, are there things that you would like to add before we open it up to the board for questions?
No, we're, we're good right now. Go ahead and ask your questions if you have them.
Questions for John or Ralph?
I don't have any questions. This is Nancy, but because I feel horrible at the situation for our seniors and, and really all of our students, it's just been, it just stinks, quite frankly, for all of them. I am not in favor of doing a virtual graduation. I am in favor of waiting until July or August to do something and to make it as normal, as humanly possible for our students, and to make sure that we send them off, our seniors send them off in, in the best way that we humanly can.
I also am in favor of postponing until July or August, and as opposed to a virtual graduation on the, um, June date.
I echo Toni and Nancy's comments. This is Kurt. Knowing many senior graduates myself, um, from what I hear from all of them, they would still like a ceremony. I had indicated last week when the state of Wisconsin was coming out with some direct guidance that might, um, recommend against ceremonies. We have our outside football stadium that we can social distance very easily in the stands and on the football field if needed. I know weather would be a factor. But from what all they've been through, um, I think, um, it would be good to finish the year with a graduation. Just want to have one shout-out. John Graff had a nice letter, um, that was read, I know in our family and others, where he points out the trials of this class being born along 9/11 was their, I remember my wife pregnant with our daughter during the 9/11 timeframe, so they brought into the year in a crisis, and now they're graduating into another crisis period. Thank you for your letter, John, and I'm in favor of pushing the graduation to July or August with a recognition date.
Please, Kurt. Other comments?
Couple of questions. Uh, I guess curiosity, why is this a board action?
The board sets the calendar, and this really is a extension of the calendar. And so we, we really, and so it doesn't have to be, but in this particular case, I, I believe it's important to have the board involvement, board action on this one, that, not that I want, you know, I can certainly set it on my own, or I can ask John and Paul to help, or John and Paul, John and Ralph to help set it, but, but I think around the state, since this is so unique, almost every school around is getting board involvement in setting the date for graduation, since it's outside of the calendar that we approved last August.
Understand. Um, I guess my only concern with that is if things, let's just say drastically change for the better here in the next couple of weeks, and we want to move the date up, well, then we got to have board action again to change the date again, correct?
Correct. But, but, but you need to remember, there's two things. One is, even if the safer-at-home guidelines go away, we still have guidelines from DPI. And so DPI says that schools are not open until June 30th. End of discussion. And so that there, you know, based on our conversations with our local health department, our state health department, and the Department of Public Instruction, that there is no opportunity for a face-to-face, traditional graduation in June, the 7th, the 14th, the 21st. It's going to be extremely difficult for us to be able to figure out how we're going to do it in July, but I think we have some flexibility for that in July. And, and you're right, Joel, if, if, if we had miraculous whatever, and we needed to, we could have a special graduation ceremony, June 21st, because some things changed, then we might need to have a special board meeting to say, you know what, we're going to re, we're going to adjust the graduation date. From everything I have been told, both locally as well as on the state level, that's not going to happen. We're going to be very fortunate to have anything in July. June is not an option.
So, Mr. Kirk, just an, just an idea, and, uh, tell us which you're more comfortable with. So this is an action item. I suppose we could convert this to not be an action item, and instead just give you the board's feedback, or we could proceed with an action item and, uh, and do it that way. I, I could go either way. I'd, I'd ask which, which makes administration more comfortable?
You know, I, I'm okay with the board not taking action and giving us a directive. I know based on everybody's comments so far, your directive is that you want a face-to-face graduation if possible, okay? And so we looked at some dates, and we had some conflicts on certain dates, but when, when John and Ralph reached out to, they had, I want to say 60% for the 12th and 40% for the 2nd, or 70, 30, or whatever those numbers were, there was more support for the 12th, and that does give us another backup date of August 2nd. But I, um, you know, so you don't have to set graduation at July 12th with the backup of August 2nd. I, I believe most of the school boards around the area, around the state are actually giving some board direction because it is a unique circumstance, and maybe giving the principal and/or superintendents some cover as to why are you holding a virtual graduation on the 7th when the overwhelming public wants it a face-to-face, okay? And when's the quickest you can do that? And so that's the reason we had it as an action item, as opposed to a non-action item, um, just to give a little bit of cover to the principals as to how to set graduation going forward. And go back to the calendar, we approve the calendar, and in there, we have a closed date, and we, we literally talk about graduation at that point in time, you know, set graduation at the same time we approve the calendar for the year.
Right. Any, any other items for, uh, any other suggestions, discussion?
When is the normal graduation this year supposed to be? June?
June 7th. June 7th is graduation. Um, first one, I, I believe, West is first and East was second.
And with Safer At Home goes through May 26?
Yep. Safer has nothing to do with DPI closing of school. And even with Safer At Home, if you get to Level 2, in the Badger Bounce Back, that you get to a Level 2 in that part, you still have to have, uh, the, a group of 25 or less, or 50 or less. And even with social distancing on the football field, and you can spread them out, you can't have 550 graduates, two groups of them go through and have a social, a, a group of 25 or less unless you want to violate the, the, the recommendations, the policies, and then that really is going to be a board decision, not a dawn decision, to go against the recommendations of the Department of Health.
I guess that was kind of my, getting to be kind of my question is, do we even want to consider that? Do we want to consider violating the recommendations of the Department of Health and having some sort of a graduation on the football field on June 6th, or whatever it was supposed to be? And if, if nobody wants to even consider that, that's fine. I guess I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, the city of Hartford was supposed to be shut down, and they decided they were going to open back up a couple of weeks ago. I mean, do we even want to consider trying to put something together on the football field and go ahead and violating the orders?
If you decide to do that, you will do that against my recommendation and your liability, because it's not, um, I, I just don't believe that that's, um, and I'm not talking even from the state level. Um, I don't know if Andy's still on, but we, there's just absolutely, our county health officials are saying the exact same thing, not necessarily that it's going to be July, that we have to rule out July, but, but there's no question that there is no justification for trying to do something in June. You, the board, you can do that, but you would be doing it despite my recommendation, as well as, um, I don't want to put words in Ralph and/or John's mouth, but I suggest that it would be despite their recommendations as well.
Uh, I, I hear you. I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that, but I, I, I hear you. I, I'm fine with having this be a board action item, just, um, you know, obviously the board hopefully understands that if we make a change, or if July 12th isn't going to be the date, then we need to have another action item to say that July 12th is going to be canceled, that sort of thing. So I'm fine with that, as long as the rest of the board is, and with that, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the recommendation for graduation for the 2020 senior class to July 12th, 2020 with a backup date of August 2nd, 2020.
Great. Thanks, Joel. Second?
I'll second. Aaron?
Thank you, Aaron. We have a motion and second to approve, um, the recommendation for graduation, July 12th, backup August 2nd. Any final discussion?
I just want to make sure, um, I'm, I'm taking a quick peek at our board calendar. We do have another regular board meeting on June 1st, and another committee of the whole meeting, which could get changed to a special board meeting on June 15th. So we do have two other committees. If July 8th doesn't work, we will obviously need to take action on that. So it looks, looks good for personal.
Good point. Okay, thank you. All right. We have a motion and second. I will call a roll. Uh, let's see. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Sorry, that, that microphone button just kind of hides sometimes. Yes, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
Swiger is a yes. Ms. Dove?
Yes.
And let's see. I don't think I got Mr. Anger. Mr. Anger?
Yes.
All right. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Good discussion, everyone. All right. The next item, here we go. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2019-20 instructional hour waiver, and Jen Gennerman, I think, is going to be presenting this.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me be here and share the information with you. Many of you were part of our public hearing, um, earlier, and so I just wanted to share a little bit more details with you about the waiver. In previous school years, we always, um, followed the DPI guidelines regarding the number of hours that we need, and that's different at each level. They give us criteria different at each level. They give us criteria as far as how to count them, whether you include passing time or recess, or you don't include that. So what we've done in the past is developed school year calendars that abide by these regulations, as well as allow for some snow days. And so what we have done this year with our, the COVID-19 situation, what we'd like to do is move forward with completing the waiver for instructional hours. As Mr. Kirkard has shared in the past and earlier in this call, we have done all the minutes as regard, as far as instruction. We took that one week off, but that really was the use of our snow days. And what we'd like to do is moving forward with a waiver of hours, it really just articulates the precedent that's being said, that we had different instruction going on during this time of the pandemic. Does anybody have questions about the waiver? DPI has completed, not completed, they've created a expedited waiver form for us to use, and I've provided a sample of that in the board docs for you to review.
So this is Nancy. I have a question, and I don't know that it's necessarily in the same vein here, but okay, I understand what we're approving. I understand why. I have no questions there. Are there going to be any changes to the start of school and how we're going to catch students up? Because obviously, we know that some students, you know, potentially struggled with distance learning, or students who, especially elementary kids who are in the process of learning maybe multiplication, or division, or all these things. Well, what's the, what's the situation that DPI is putting out, or do we have a plan on how we're going to do that? I mean, can we add a week of school to the other end? I know everyone's going to freak out about that, but I'm just thinking about how students, there are going to be some students who are severely behind when we come back to school in September. How are we going to adjust for that?
We would need to adjust, in our current plan, we would be adjusting our approach to where we're starting the year, how we're, how, we don't know yet if we're face-to-face, what the model for school is in September. So we're talking about all of those possibilities, as well as gathering all of the information we need, excuse me, in order to determine where we're starting with the curriculum at every grade level in each course. So that will be worked on. I don't expect us to have that finished by the end of the school year, but we'll be gathering information from this ending portion of the year to continue planning through the summer for that. Did I not consider adding a week of instructions like you just said that?
To Nancy.
That's not going to make me very popular with children, so let's not tell the whole world that I came up with that. But I guess, you know, I guess I just have serious concerns with that, and I'll be real honest, and I'm not trying to start some political battle here, but let's agree that administration hasn't really been listening to the people. So I certainly hope that DPI is being more mindful of what districts have to say, and that I hope that, you know, West Bend is leading the charge and being very loud about what our students need, and how they can best learn, and, you know, maybe learning from some other countries and the way they're handling this. I mean, I have very, very serious concerns for what the fall is going to look like, especially for elementary students. I mean, I'm sure you all have those same concerns, but, I mean, this is, we're going to have some kids who are severely behind, and how do we catch them up?
Nancy, one of the things that we'll share a little bit later is just information about summer school and how to move forward with that, because that is a step between now and fall, and we're hopeful to provide some great learning opportunities for all kids then.
Right, but I mean, I think, Jen, we all know that not everyone, that's not going to work for every family, right? So I mean, we have a probably, what, I don't know, do we even have half of our kids who do summer school? I mean, there are going to be, let's agree, if we've got 6,000 students, there's going to be probably 1,000 of those students that need some serious catching up in the fall. So I mean, I just hope we're being mindful of that. I don't want to see West Bend waiting for DPI and waiting for the state to get their stuff together. I'd like to see us leading that charge and forcing them to get their stuff together, so that, you know, we have, you know, we have a good plan for what's best for our students, not allowing someone else to write our story, but we write our story and explain this, what our students need.
So Nancy, one of the things, and not just Nancy, the whole board, obviously, school is going to start next fall with some major remediation, because you're 100% correct in that we've got kids who are behind, okay, and we've got, even some of the who are ahead aren't as far ahead as they would typically be, so there's going to be some remediation. One of the things, if you were to add, adding a week, considering we can do that, then let me, and HR is going to have to go back into negotiations and contracts, and I'm not saying we can't do that, but we are teaching kind of a number of days, and so if we were to add these to that, that's not saying we can't, but we're going to have to figure out how that works in the whole contract perspective as well. And so we need to be mindful of both contract for teachers, as well as how do we get kids up to speed, because we don't want to have the gap increase, and that's what we think is going to happen, the gap between the haves and the have-nots is going to be even greater than ever before.
Well, I probably have a pretty unpopular opinion about how to fix that contract thing too, that we don't need to talk about either right now, but I just think that people need to be mindful, and I think we're doing a good job of continuing to say like, hey, this is different than it's ever been before. And while we watch a lot of people lose jobs, and we've watched a lot of people take pay cuts, we have continued to pay our staff, and we haven't cut their pay, and we haven't done anything like that. And I know some are working very hard and putting in lots of time. I'm not suggesting that, but I also think there needs to be some consideration that, you know, we've got kids who are going to be behind, and your job is an educator. And if you need an extra week at the beginning of the year, and that's going to save you from yanking out your hair for the rest of the year because the kids are so far behind, if I was an educator, I would take that option. Just saying.
Thanks, Nancy. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? All right. Hearing none. Back to the expedited waiver submission. I move to approve the expedited waiver submission for instructional hours due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
I'll second. Joel?
Joel, thanks for the second. Any final discussion?
I saw on the news today, 60% of the 421 school districts have applied for the waiver as of this morning. So I'm sure after Monday night's board meetings throughout the state, it'll be even higher tomorrow, so.
All right. We'll call the roll then. Mr. Redd Holtz?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Let's see. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Onder?
Yes.
And Mr. Swiger is a yes. Seven zero. Thanks, everyone, for the vote. All right, that carries. We're on then to some policy items. We've got one, two, three, three fast-track items for policies and one for an exhibit, which is a little bit new. Laura, I think you're going to walk us through that, correct?
Correct. Tim will join us for the exhibit. The policies that you have are considering for Fast Track, really, the part-time open enrollment is just really an update that we reviewed it. Start College Now and Early College Credit. When those policies were put into place, we were sunsetting the youth options and course options policies. The change for Fast Track really removes reference to those two policies. There's not a structural change, just not a significant change to the action that the policy puts in place. It just eliminates the references to programs that no longer exist, as the students who are utilizing the opportunity to participate in Early College Credit and Start College Now no longer also have youth options credits.
So pausing there. Are there any questions from any of the, any of the board members? Just to confirm, Laura, so 343.44 really doesn't change. We're just noting that we've reviewed it, and that we're deleting obsolete references?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Chris, are we doing these individually or collectively?
That is a great question. Tell you what, why don't we, well, I'll tell you, I'll take a motion either way.
I've got a question on 343.45 instructional arrangements, sorry, Start College Now program. Just, you know, me and my usual consistency. The first paragraph under the Responsibility for Costs heading, it's a reference to the Board of Education, should be updated to the school board, correct?
Correct.
That's all I have on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, maybe I'll just beg the, beg the board's indulgence, if that's okay. If there aren't any other questions, let's at least discuss the exhibit. And I think you said, Tim was going to take that one?
Good evening, board members. So at our policy committee meeting, we went through this. 823 policy is public access to records, and the public access to records, there's an exhibit that goes with it. It's similar to an administrative rule, but doesn't carry the same written piece that it's from the administration. It comes from the board and the direction of how we process those different open records requests and where the notification gets placed. So in Exhibit 823.1, the changes are that we are explicitly calling out that it is posted on our district website, so not just in physical locations across the district, but it's also available made there. As we scroll down to Section 6, it explicitly calls out the fact that a community member can request a digital copy of such records. This is in relation to updated case law around some pieces in the state of Wisconsin, and so that reflects new guidance from our attorneys and also the state attorneys, and the fact that a community member can request a digital record of said copy and not a paper copy, or can even request the initial or true file type of that email. So instead of just requesting a PDF of the email, they can actually ask for the different file type behind it that includes metadata and so forth. And then the last change in this exhibit really comes down to Area 7, just titled out and calls out who is really what is considered a local public office. It may, our current board member terms of using the school board. It also reflects changes in titles that the district has, and explicitly calls out to make sure that we have all district-level administrators covered, not just directors or department heads at that point. It clarifies that.
Great. Any questions for Tim on 823.1?
I'll move to approve Fast Track recommendation for policies 343.44, Part-Time Open Enrollment, 343.45, Start College Now, 343.46, Early College Credit, and Exhibit 823.1, Official Notice.
All right. Do we have a second?
This is Paul, second.
Great. Thank you, Paul. We have a motion in second to approve all these items, Fast Track recommendations. Any final discussion? Not, I will call the, call the roll. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Redd Holtz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Onder?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger is a yes. Seven zero. Thank you. All right. That takes us to the next item, which is first reading of a number of policies. 345.3, Homework, 615, Disclosure of Financing, Total Cost of Referenda, and 345.61, Early Graduation. And these are first readings. So Laura, will you guide us through those?
Yes. The first policy on the list is the homework policy. You can see the strike through, which is, represents current policy that is being recommended for revision, and then the red is additional information recommended for addition. The policy committee spent a number of meetings talking about the homework policy. We brought it back on a few different times, and the policy committee settled on the red underlined section being the recommendation going forward, which is the, for the most part, it is the recommendation from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. We did choose to eliminate one item which referenced the percentage at which homework would account for a grade. Are there any questions from the board on the homework policy that is presented today?
Yeah. Laura, can you speak to why, so in the Wisconsin Association of, whatever you just said, as far as the recommendations, why did we choose not to put the percentage in? We didn't agree with that, or we wanted to give our teachers their own autonomy to figure that out, or what's our reasoning?
Laura, in fact, according to that, that was part of our old, that the percentage was part of our old policy from years gone by. That wasn't a WASB part. That was a school board from when they had the initial homework policy. I don't believe WASB had a percentage of homework included in theirs. That was in the policy from West Bend, and we chose to eliminate it because homework has such a different version now. Is it part of a project that requires a significant amount of time in and out of class? Is it just doing your assignments, you're going to do one through seven in your path, well, that's maybe homework, but if it's part of a portfolio, is that, it's done at home, is that part of your homework as well? And that was the reason why it was taken out, but I don't think it was ever, and Laura, you can check and see, I don't think it was ever part of WASB. I think it was just part of ours. Laura, is that right?
I am going to have to just double-check that. Let's take a quick look. You are correct that it had been a longstanding part of our policies in West Bend, that it was specifically 10%.
So, okay, so now we're basically, so I guess, help me to answer my question then. So now are we saying to the teachers, it's up to you to decide, or are we saying homework doesn't count in your grade at all? I'm totally confused.
Right. So it's, the, part of our discussion earlier at policy had been, what does the board need to identify and regulate with regard to homework? The policy committee had considered dropping the homework policy, to say maybe the board doesn't need to regulate homework at all, and leave that up to the schools to put it their, into their school handbooks. The determination was to retain the homework policy with the modifications presented.
Okay. I guess, I'm not really getting the answer I'm looking for, but I don't, I don't know how else to phrase it.
Do, is there a member of the policy committee that wants to speak to that?
The WASB, WASB's initial recommendation actually states that a lot of school districts don't even have a homework policy, but if you do, your recommendation is kind of the way it reads in the Policy Resource Guide. And we've, what we've put forward from the policy committee is basically what the Policy Resource Guide says. The policy committee, I shouldn't speak on behalf of the committee, I speak on behalf of myself. I liked point number three in this proposed new policy, which, which basically states that homework must be developmentally, developmentally appropriate, meaningful, based on clearly communicated expectations, realistic and equitable. So I like that, and I am in favor of keeping the policy, and I like some of those points, because homework shouldn't be a punishment. It shouldn't be something that's so damn hard that, that kids are going home, pulling their hair out, trying to get done. It's got to be developmentally appropriate, that sort of thing. And so for some of those reasons, that's why I like keeping the homework policy in the West Bend school district. You know, and then as it relates to homework as part of your grade, we talked about this quite a bit, because sometimes projects start happening in the classroom, and then, and it's, it could be a major project, it's a major part of your grade, that ends up coming home with the student for homework outside of the classroom. And so we didn't really want to specifically see it in there that it can't count towards a certain percent, more or less of your grade, because there are projects that will be taken home and completed as homework. So as I recall, those are some of my thoughts. Maybe Erin, Chris, if you recall some of those discussions. Maybe Erin, Chris, if you recall some of those discussions.
Yeah. Your last point was the one that we, I think we spent the most time on, was not assigning a certain percentage or time to homework because of those bigger things that can come home that maybe are actually 30% of your grade, but you have to do a little bit at home to get it done. So, I mean, I remember spending most time talking about points like that.
Yeah, I agree. Project, go ahead, Nancy.
I think my question, though, is more, you know, you've kind of hit on it a little bit, like each class is different, right? So, I might need to practice my math at home. I get that, right? But maybe I've got a big project for science. I have no idea if that was even the right example, but I'm understanding that. I guess my real question is, I don't want, you know, Joel pointed out, he doesn't want the Board micromanaging our administrators. Well, I certainly don't want administrators or the Board micromanaging teachers. So, that's my question. Has this been left up to the teachers, then? If I'm the Spanish teacher, you know, do, am I still assigning work, and are these kids responsible to do it? Do I have that authority as a teacher, or have we just taken that away from the teacher now? That's what I'm trying to get to the nitty-gritty of here.
So, Nancy, this, again, and so, our current policy says it shall count for, it's no more than 10%. So, it doesn't say it's going to count at all. It doesn't, some teachers might have, have no homework, some might have some homework, some goes up, but no more than 10%. And so, our elimination of the 10%, or the Policy Committee's elimination of the 10% had nothing to do with taking away from the teacher's ability to assign homework, any more than it is right now. It's just that up to 10% makes it look like some of those projects are, have to be no more than 10%. And in reality, those are more than just homework projects. Those are portfolios. There are the other things that maybe you're doing at home as well. It hasn't done anything to eliminate teacher prerogative. It's actually given them more, because right now it's no more than 10%, and that no more is gone. So, you could have 40% homework, and then that's going to be part of the principal and handbooks, both from there. But it actually gives teachers more authority, not less.
And just to verify, Don was correct that the 10% was not in WASB at all, only in our existing practice and policy.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my questions. Thank you, everybody.
Good discussion. Right. Why don't we walk through, let's see, since this is, again, this is first reading, so we're not going to, we're not going to vote on these. That being the case, unless there are other questions, why don't we move to 615, disclosure of financing and total cost of all referenda?
Evening again. Thank you for your time. This is Andrew Sarno. I do have an attachment within Board Docs. I do have, it's marked up with some blue additions, recommended additions. Red strikeout is recommendations for removal. Initially brought forward on February 24th, the Policy Committee. This was discussed the April 27th Policy Committee meeting. This is a recommendation or language brought forward for your consideration, certainly open to any changes that you wish to take place. Specific, the goals that I had for this, two of them. Versus to clarify on information that it's disclosed. What can be disclosed? This is a nice policy to have. It's somewhat ambiguous. There's some, my belief, and this is my interpretation, there is some possibility of some confusion that could take place due to the language that's included in here. We use the Badger signage board out front of Badger. Please vote today. Does it need to contain the financial information, and not just the referendum information, but also interest and whatnot? So, this clarifies. This clarifies a lot of that. The second thing that I believe this does is it actually enhances the shared information to disclose the tax impact, specifically the mill rate. So, as we look at borrowing money, the repayment of that, and what impact that could have on a property tax owner, this shares, it clarifies what, and it actually discloses that information the current policy does not have. It's silent on that language. So, I guess those are my two goals of the edits of this policy. I'd be happy to entertain. I do have a green pen with me, so I can make some notes and whatnot to bring this forward at future meetings with any changes you wish to take place.
And you, just to clarify the, and you just talked about the tax impact of the referendum using the mill rate impact scenario. That's not addressed in all of the current policy, one way or the other. Is that true? Do I have that right?
That's correct.
I'm not opposed to including Item C, but one thought is, well, if it's not prohibited by the current policy, do we need to include that language necessarily at all? Do you know what I'm saying? For simplicity's sake?
Yeah. I could imagine that if there was an initial postcard, or flyer, or even is referenced in the proposed policy, creating a website, I could definitely see including that information. That's something that at all the presentations that we'd have with a 15-slide deck, that would be one of the slides. That would be information that may even have its own header on a website. Is it required? No. But I would still consider doing, I wouldn't consider doing, I would actually do that, or it's just something that I would include.
Okay. That's helpful.
Other than the policy states that it's a requirement, we would still include that somewhere housed in an area that's accessible and clearly shown. And Don, I see you unmuted.
I see. I think, Andy, in our last failed referendum, even though it wasn't part of the policy that we would have it in there, I believe we used that information on every one of our mailings, on every one of our presentations. And so, I think, Joel, our first, to your point, whether you put it in or not, from a political, or from a information perspective, we would certainly want to share that information, because it does show you the tax consequences. And so, whether you keep it in there or not, it's a mute issue, but even if you don't keep it in there, it's something you're certainly going to want to have in your presentations, just like we did last April.
Andy, this is Paul. I think the biggest material change to this proposal is Section B, where you're striking the clear statement on any printed communication, let's say, and replacing it with a reference to a website. Thinking back to the two public comments that we had at the last Board meeting, I would not be in support of Addition B in replacement of the printed stuff, because, again, it's, you know, Nancy talks about the transparency and the public relations issues in the community. I realize that this is one of the more onerous policies that we need to follow locally, as opposed to state statutes. But I like the transparency that it brings, and to refer somebody off to a website for all that information, yeah, it's going to say the same thing that we would have otherwise printed on the card, but it's one step removed, and, oh, I forget to go look at it and so forth. And I just personally feel that's a battle that we need to take on.
I agree with Paul.
So, Andy, can you maybe talk about, then, the benefit of using a website for this type of information versus a postcard? Item D specifically?
Yeah. Specific to Item D, I think if you're thinking a full, open, let's say, 11-by-17 folded mailer, so literally a full eight-and-a-half-by-11 that opens up, I think that contains all of the information. You would have that to go out to the community, every single household. That could be a true mailer for initial information. It would include all of, everything that we've talked about. If we send out a mailer at some point that says, please vote, we have a referendum on November 3rd, April 6th, whatever that might be, if we have any type of information, including something that's up to the size of a postcard, I think it's going to be an interesting design that would still allow us to have a simple approach, yet contain all of that information on it. So, really, the goal of this was not to not include all of that information, and maybe we look at something that says all of that would have to be included at some point in a mailing. But I guess we need to clarify what specific communications include all of the information. So, if I'm emailing back and forth with a reporter, and he or she is asking for information about an upcoming referendum, would I in that email, because it's considered a communication, have to say, oh, by the way, the interest on this $20 million debt issuance is equivalent to $5.6 million at an estimated 3.75% interest rate to be paid over the course of 20 years? I guess we just need to clarify, we just need to clarify what communications need to have that level of detail included in them.
So, this is Nancy. Couldn't we clarify by saying, when there is a all-household mailing, as opposed to, I mean, I think that's ridiculous to assume we're going to put it on the Badger sign. I also think that's ridiculous to assume that you're going to include it in every single email. But, I mean, if you're doing an all-mail, an all-household mailing to the entire district, I guess, you know, we're not going to say on there how big each letter has to be. I mean, that can be the fine print, you know, and your message, your big gold message is get out and vote. I don't, I just, I agree with Paul and Tony. I don't want to lose that, because we have obviously a pretty divided community, and we don't want to misinform anyone, or anyone to think that they've been misinformed, is a better choice of words there. But, I mean, I'd be in favor of it all printed and mailed. I guess, to me, it needs to be a mailed publication, would be my suggestion.
Nancy, I'd spin it just a little bit differently, and because there are materials that were handed out, you know, at the Jackson Listening Sessions, for example. I would suggest that it be any district-produced materials in support of the referendum, communicating the referendum, something like that, so that it doesn't, you know, oh, it wasn't put in the mail, so therefore, you know, we're splitting hairs. But it's a promotional piece from the district pertaining to the referendum. Andy's scenario of an email could still potentially be spun into that, but, you know, a mass-produced communication from the district, something along those lines, I think, would give us the coverage that we need.
Paul, are you suggesting for any and all, so if you do five mailers, trying to educate the community about the referendum, all five mailers would have to have this information?
I don't know how we would necessarily split it and say, you know, the first two, and then everything after could refer to, because I think we need a website as well. I'm all for, you know, multiple-channel communications, but I just don't know where you draw the line and say, okay, you've fulfilled this obligation, now the rest of it's free and clear.
I think all the mailers, if there were five in that proposed scenario, would have to have that fine print, because not everyone looks at all their mail at the same time, and, you know, maybe they catch two of them, and they miss the two that those details are on. I mean, we can get ourselves caught up if we don't have that fine print on all of them.
And again, I appreciate that there are other districts that don't have to do this, because, again, it's not required by state statute, but I appreciate the spirit in which this was created. And, yeah, we got caught last time around, but, you know, it was a combination of us and our business partner, and we learn, and I think, you know, when the time comes for another referendum somewhere down the road, we'll be better for it.
And so, I don't know if it would hurt to continue to keep the information on all the mailers, on all the, when we're talking about the referendum, per se, then our initial conversation, Andy and I had, was that we're okay with sending that information out. We can also put it on the website, but we're okay with continuing to put that information out 100% of the time, okay? The real issue that I had was, when I just say the word referendum, or when we say, don't forget to vote in the referendum, do you then need to include everything? Obviously, if you're talking about the dollars of a referendum, you need to do that. If you're just talking about what we would like to do at the high school and show a new state-of-the-art CAD facility, or a welding, or manufacturing, and we're not talking about it's a $3 million addition, a $10 million addition, it's just, this is what's available in CTE, or this is what a 21st-century library looks like, do we then need to put everything on there that's talking, if we're not talking dollars at all, do we need to include everything? If we're talking about dollars, and I know they have brought up truth and lending, and I'm 100% okay with that, but truth and lending has nothing to do with me looking at a car. It's only when I look at the dollar amount of the car, does it become the truth and lending part, or I'm just buying a house or selling a house, that the fact that, when you talk to dollars, that's when you talk about truth and lending. And I think we could continue to do everything we've done in the past, just figure out a way to split it out, so we're not talking about everything, every time you use the R-word in a discussion. That's the point that, when we had our initial discussion, that's what it was all about.
I appreciate what you're saying, Don, and I wish we could talk about things like what a 21st-century library looks like, or car shopping, but too many people, they won't even look at something like that without you mentioning what it's going to cost. They don't even want to see, well, I don't even want to look at that fancy car without knowing what it's going to cost. So, I think even when you're trying to present concepts, this is what a 21st-century library looks like. If you don't say, and this is what something like that costs, we're going to be accused of hiding things and not being transparent. And I think that's just what we need to accept.
I think we're talking two different things, too. We're talking concept and vision casting versus a hard, fast plan for a facility, multiple facilities, whatever the case might be. And I think when it's in that latter mode of, we have a defined plan, we have a budget, and we know what kind of money we're going to be asking for, then we need to be full disclosure of truth and lending.
I'm grateful for the discussion and the viewpoints. What I'm going to suggest is, it looks like we need to take a kind of a deeper look at this, and the good news is, we're not at all in a hurry to modify anything, if we modify anything at all, but would like to keep the topic fresh and moving forward. If it's all right, I'm going to suggest that Policy Committee take another look at this one. We'll bring it back to the Board for additional discussion. Are there any objections to that?
I have no objection to that. I guess I'd like to point out, for the good of the order here, this policy was adopted eight years ago and hasn't been reviewed since. This policy was long overdue for a simple policy review, which we've done, and here we are discussing it. And the policy we're going to talk about next, for instance, is two years old, and this one is eight years old. And so, I guess, just want to make that point, that there's no hidden agenda here on why the Policy Committee started looking at this. It's just been long overdue to be looked at, is my point.
Great. Joel? All right. We'll take another look at that at Policy Committee. And let's see, I think there is another one here, and that is 345.61, early graduation for first reading. Laura, will you take that one?
Yes. This one came before the full Board previously for the first reading. At that time, we had a lot of discussion, and it was recommended- At that time, we had a lot of discussion, and it was recommended that we take the policy back to the committee, for the policy committee to have further discussion, to determine if there was additional revision that was going to be recommended going forward. And so you have the policy presented before you. The particular area that we had a lot of discussion on at the last time this was presented to the full board was Roman numeral two citizenship, and the elimination of that from the policy. And after some discussion at the policy committee, the committee felt it was ready to move forward again and bring back to the full board. The elimination of citizenship continues to be recommended. Part of the reason for that is when a student has met all graduation requirements, their diploma has been earned, and holding them back because of tardiness or truancy was not in the best interest of the district or of the student themselves. And that summarizes the discussion at policy. Are there any questions from the board on that?
Any questions? And again, this is first reading, so we would see this again at a future meeting.
Correct.
So if there are additional questions in the meantime, we've got another opportunity to take a look at it. But are there any questions?
No questions. This is Nancy. I'm the one who made this think about this one. You know, I still feel strongly about this, I understand both sides of it, just putting it out there, I will not vote for this policy because of that exclusion. I do understand the reasons that Laura stated, and I have talked to Don about it further, but this one just kind of gets my goat, and I can't support that without the citizenship portion of it. So just so everyone understands my reasoning.
Thanks, Nancy. Appreciate that. Other thoughts? Other questions? All right. Let's see, and then student wellness, first reading, board policy 452. Laura?
So policy 452, student wellness, is being brought forward as earlier this year, we looked at the district wellness policy. The district wellness policy didn't cover student wellness in the breadth that it needed to. So before you is Wasby's recommended policy. They have several versions out there. We had some discussion about this at the policy committee, and the draft, again, for the new policy is coming forward to you now. It is listed as student wellness, as that is what's required in statute, and following the approval of this policy, we will continue to work with Abby Padilla, our nutrition director, and other members of the district and the parent group, as required in statute, to develop the AR and the actions forward for this policy. Are there any questions about 452?
Laura, this is Paul. In the bottom, on page one, the lead-in statement going into the enumerated points, it refers to the superintendent director of school nutrition. Is that part of the Wasby boilerplate, or is that the official title that we have in our district?
No, that is not the official title. In the Wasby boilerplate, it had superintendent or designee, and then had the director. So that was, that was an error that was not caught.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I really appreciate that.
Paul, according to your editorial skills to the test, thanks, appreciate the good, thorough reading. So when we bring this back next time, Laura, we can include that switch.
Yes.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions on policy 452? All right, and we'll see those back for second reading. Okay, which takes us to the superintendent's report. Mr. Kirkegaard.
Thank you. The only comment that I would like to make tonight is on summer school, and I have Jen Gettrman on as well, and so I'm going to ask her to step in as well. And so what we're going to go forward with is we're going to continue with summer school as scheduled for grades eight through 12, which would be for credit recovery, credit advancement, as well as kids to get caught up on the spring semester on a pass/fail, or pass, do not pass, if they aren't at the do not pass, at the pass level yet. Hopefully, they can get caught up by the end of summer school. It will be asynchronous as well as synchronous, which means sometimes there'll be a teacher right in front, sometimes it will be assignments due at a different point in time. And we have had virtual in the past. Based on DPI regulations, we cannot do anything face-to-face until the end of June. We think it's important for us to continue to start, continue with our high school, summer school as quickly as we can, or Reitman School is out because they're planning on it for credit advancement and/or credit recovery. Grades 4K through seventh grade, we really want to hold out, if at all possible, to see if we can do some face-to-face instruction. We know that, especially in the lower elementary, it was extremely difficult for many of our kids to go at the level we would like to with the distance virtual learning, and so we don't know what will happen in July. We're hoping that we have an opportunity to do maybe a blended model, and so we're looking at July 6th through the 31st, which is the same length of time as what we had for traditionally scheduled, but it would be a blended summer school as opposed to a strictly virtual summer school. Jen, can you take it from there and help me out a little bit?
Sure, I can really provide a few more details. We've been working behind the scenes in anticipation of what it could look like and what it might look like. But for the high school, we really want to proceed as we've planned, and just making the learning opportunities virtual for the kids. We've been cross-referencing courses and platforms that we can have access to, just to ensure that kids have consistent learning opportunities. And at the younger level, we've been looking at, we have a lot of enrichment classes, so we've been looking at, how do we, you know, how are we thinking about the idea of flipping them and, you know, with an altered schedule, or whatever we're allowed to by the state, so that we can get kids in schools learning?
Summer school is not about making money. At the same time, it is a source of revenue for us. We get per-student allocation based on the percentage of kids who are, the number of kids percentage, and it's varied anywhere from 150 to 350, 400,000 a few years ago. I think the last few years, and Andy, you can help me out, it's been in the hundreds. And so we, we're not going to make a ton of money, and we're not doing it this year for money as much as we are just to try to keep people abreast of education and go forward. And we know that if we have 600 kids in summer school, in the element, you know, we don't have 1,000 kids total, okay? And if we have 6,000 kids in the district, Nancy said something earlier about half, we're not anywhere near half. You know, we're a sixth, a quarter would be phenomenal if we could get a quarter of our kids in summer school. So this is an opportunity for us to do more, but it certainly isn't the opportunity for us to get totally caught up on all of the things that kids have missed the last 11 weeks.
Thanks. Oh, go ahead, Jen, please.
I was just going to say, I would also add just more detail about the high school level, that the idea would be that some of the learning will take place online at the same time, and some will be on their own, like Don had said, but what we'd like to move forward with is really having that touch point with teachers and students, you know, two times a week into their, just to touch base and give them feedback on their learning, check on their progress, but also to go over maybe concepts that they may not be getting in some of the work they started or completed on their own. So I think that will be a nice add to really meet the kids' needs, rather than just all virtual.
Jen, I have a question. Is registration closed for summer school, or is there an opportunity to open that up when we have hard direction?
It is still open. When we communicated that summer school was on hold, we did say we are still accepting registrations, and we're also still accepting teacher applications, because honestly, we've had a great number of teachers who have applied, and I think some of them are liking the virtual piece and interested to see, you know, more of that in some capacity. So we've kept both the teacher applications and student enrollment open. What I'll do, though, is after this meeting, start that communication, because there are some classes like team sports. It's going to be very hard to do that virtually, and so unfortunately, we do have a few classes that will be canceled for June and July. I'll start the communication with communicating those families first, before I communicate to the whole system that, hey, this is what it's going to look like. So I just want to give those families who have already signed up, and there may be a class change, I want to give them the communication prior to continuing to communicate it to everybody, if that makes sense.
Yep.
But we'll push it out again, saying, hey, we're looking for more. We'll ask people to, you know, quickly make decisions so that we can make the staffing decisions, but it's remained open, and we continue to monitor numbers. So that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Joel?
Nothing there. Thank you.
All right, looked like you were taking a breath. Any other questions? All right, superintendent, any other items for your report?
That'll do it.
All right, that takes us to future agenda items in our board meeting calendar, which is in your materials in board docs. In June, we have a regular board meeting on Monday, the 1st of June, and committee of the whole meeting on Monday, June 15th. Any other discussion items on our, with regard to the board calendar upcoming? All right, I believe that takes us to the end of our meeting. Are there any other business to come before the floor? If not, I will move to chair our meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, any final discussion? I will take role, it's rebel.
Yep.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
And Ms. Swigert is a yes at 7:00, our meeting is adjourned. I really appreciate the discussion today, and we all come from different viewpoints, but I really, really appreciate it. I mean, we've not all hold a yes to everything today and talked about, you know, what our thoughts are. Thank you for making the comment, and we can consider those in future deliberation. I really appreciate our inter- tonight. Thanks, everyone.
You know, to Tim and the city and for doing the virtual things, it appears to be working on my end, and so thanks for everyone who makes that possible.
Great, thanks, Joel. All right, everyone, we are adjourned. Thanks for your time.
Night.